Okay. All right, I'd like to bring the meeting to order. Welcome back Commissioners. It was nice to see all of you in person. We have a long agenda tonight, so let's stay on track. And let's start it off with our pledge of allegiance. Okay, first on the agenda is public comments. We're going to limit this to five minutes per citizen. And this is public comments that do not relate to any of the other public hearings as noted on the agenda. So is there anyone here that wishes to speak tonight? If so, approach the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll close that, move on to the next agenda item. Approval of the Planning Commission meeting. Minutes from March 2nd. I can't believe it was that long ago. I did talk to Jared about a change. It was a very, very simple change. That I made a comment during the meeting about the lighting of the field. And the way it was worded in the meeting minutes here that I questioned the field lighting. And it wasn't intended to be that way. I believed it was. I asked Mr. Epperali to explain the lighting that would be used. Because it was so, such a unique lighting. So if we can get that changed, and then I'll sign off on the minutes that we can vote next time. Or, Will, can we vote on them now with that change?
Sure, if the rest of the commission agrees, but...
Okay, can I have a moment?
Thanks for sitting there for so long. I'm happy to have this revised text and bring it back to you all for the next meeting. It'll be next week, so...
Oh, that's great. Oh, we just wait until it's over. Okay, so let's move on. So that means this...
I'm so sorry. So I missed what you said. Can you just explain what you're doing with the ones?
In the last meeting that we had, it stated that I questioned the lighting that was going in in the park. And it wasn't that I questioned the lighting. I asked for an explanation of the lighting. Because it was so unique. It was direct lighting. So I just wanted it to be restated. So it wasn't like I was questioning it. Okay?
I can make a motion to accept the minutes with the change. Accept the statement.
You have a second?
One second.
All those are there?
Fine.
All those against? Passes. Okay, now we'll move on. Point number three. Tonight we have four public hearings. Two, the first two, three and four relate to the same. But three is dealing with the rezoning. And four is dealing with the condition of use permit relating to the public hearing of number three. So, public hearing. For rezoning request for Montgomery County School Board applicant owner for approximately 16.66 acres property located at 208 College Street Northwest. Map, tax map number 526-8-175. Their request is to rezone the property from R2, two-family residential district to the B3, general business district. The property is designated as downtown mixed-use on the future land use map of 2013 Christiansburg comprehensive plan. Do we have anyone here that wishes to speak tonight? If so, they would approach the podium. We do have two, yes, those that signed up to speak. Thanks for the reminder. Melissa, are we okay for that now? Are they online?
They are, I'm getting them ready too.
Okay, so Jared with us here. We're going to, he'll let those two go first, and then we'll open it up.
One second.
You're good to go, Mr. Gerzels.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission members. Hope everybody is doing well. I live in Blacksburg, but I grew up in Christiansburg and have lived here all my life. My mom still lives there in Christiansburg. And we own rental property there in Christiansburg. And I hope everyone has had the opportunity to read my comments that I submitted earlier this afternoon. I'll try to keep my comments as brief and as diplomatic as possible. And if I veer off, I apologize for that in advance. But I have to admit that I'm not, I don't know the background of this school board request. I don't know all the details. I'm coming in late to the game. And I hear that the school board wants to move their their ugly bus garage over to the Christiansburg Middle School, the old Christiansburg Middle School property. And that concerns me immensely. I am, I am very interested in the revitalization of downtown Christiansburg. And bringing it back to life. And I feel that that piece of prime property there, the, the old historic Christiansburg Middle High School is a very important component of the whole thing. And I feel like that the leaders of, of the town need to take a long-term vision of this property. And envision what it could be five or 10 years down the road. It's not going to happen overnight. But let's, let's look at a, at a perfect example that happened over in Blacksburg with the Midtown project. It took a long time, yes, but it finally came together. And it's going to be a tremendous asset. And an economic development factor for Christiansburg and the county, excuse me, for Blacksburg and the county. And I would love to see something like that happen with the Christiansburg property. And I'm afraid that if we go rezoning it for industrial or mechanical use, we're going to get ourselves caught, you know, in a, in a a very complex situation for a long time. And not able to perhaps get out of that. Especially if the school board gets used to that use there, then we may never get the property back. I, I purchased 207 West Main Street because I feel like there's a future in downtown Christiansburg. I think things will move. They've already started to move from Blacksburg towards Christiansburg. And, and we are planning some, some nice improvements at that building. We're moving in the Department of Aging. We're building NRV Cares, a new space. We've moved in Brayley and Thompson Child Adoption, Adoption Agency. And we are renovating the 10 apartment units there, which, which the back units all have a really pleasant view of the old Christiansburg Middle School. And we don't want to see that marred by bus traffic, garage use, whatever it may be. And so therefore, I feel like, you know, we need to take a step back. Let's look at this from a long-term perspective. Let's see what, what the best use will be for that property down the road. And not back ourselves into a corner with the rezoning here. So I'm going to urge you folks not to vote in favor of this. And, and let's, let's just explore all the potential options for what's best for that property for long-term. I really see that as being a beautiful mixed-use project one day. And I really think we need to strive for, for achieving that goal. So I want to thank your time and listening. And again, I urge you not to vote in favor of a rezoning. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move on to the next caller. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome, thank you.
We're ready for you, Mr. Berman.
Good evening. Can you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Elliot Berman. I live in Blacksburg, but I also work in Christiansburg downtown at the 205 West Main Street building. I just wanted to voice my opposition for this. And I just wanted to, you know, reiterate the fact that Victor was trying to make with, I believe this could be a, a very, you know, great mixed-use property in the future. And, yeah, I definitely wouldn't want, you know, the, the town to rezonate and cut off that possibility in the future for, for somebody to come in there and, you know, put some, maybe a community, a community project like they did down on Price's Fork at the old Price's Fork Elementary School, or, or something along that nature. But that's, that's really all I had to say. Just wanted to voice my opposition for it. Thank you.
Sorry.
For me, this is, you know, I don't know whether to oppose it or, or hope that it passes. Because I mean, it really does show a lack of vision of the leadership. Not necessarily all, but of Christiansburg. They had an art planning grant that were downtown. And we're in there didn't say anything about a bus terminal. You know, they're asking for a $500,000 art grant. Put permanent structures on Hickok Street for the farm to burn. Which is basically a block away from this property. So let's just build a bus terminal there. I mean, and I wanted to email you all pictures, but y'all don't have just a common email where it goes to all of them, or at least not listed on the website. But I took pictures the other day of the current bus station on Cambria. And it looks like crap. The steps are crumbling. There are weeds growing through the fence. The fence is rusted. The barbed wire is rusted. It's falling apart. In some, in one section, the actual fence is growing into the tree, which means that's what happens when you like live out in the country on a farm. The barbed wire will grow into the bark of the tree. That's happening down there. They don't maintain the site as it is. So let's just give them an, an opportunity to purge 17 acres right in the heart of downtown Christiansburg into another crap hole. You know? I think that this would be a really bad idea. Because if you look back at their history and you look at that site on Cambria, you can see that they aren't very good about maintaining their property. I'm surprised that our new code enforcement officer hasn't been out there to site it. Because it looks that bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Liz Dixon, and I live at 100 South Franklin. And I just learned about this, so I don't know about all the details except what I've heard. And then what I, you know, just what I've heard in comments. But it really saddens me. Because we, we moved downtown. We left the county to come downtown to fix up that, we live, you know, it's the big white house on the corner. And we're trying to do all we can to preserve Christiansburg. I grew up in Christiansburg. I graduated from Christiansburg High School. I love this town. And I feel like the gentleman that just talked, I feel like it's going to do Christiansburg a great disservice. This isn't the only house that we've remodeled in Christiansburg. We've done several houses that were fallen to the ground. Why? Not because we're making a lot of money, but because we care about Christiansburg. And I just, it really saddens me that we would, would take this opportunity, that a great opportunity in that many acres to turn it into a bus terminal. I mean, it is going to be, like he said, I just wonder, how are they going to maintain it? But even if they did maintain it, can you imagine? Like when I, I, when I come into Christiansburg, you know, honestly, I'm praying that some of those old, like the, the old gas station, that seafood restaurant, I'm praying that someone will take a hold of that. If I had the money, I would do it. My husband and I would do it. Because, why? Because we care about the appearance of Christiansburg. And when you come into it, you know, you want to feel that sense of pride. I know I do, because I live here and I love Christiansburg. But, you know, I'm just hoping that y'all will reconsider. And think about the, the long-term, you know, what this is going to do to us long-term. I feel like it's just going to dry the whole place up. I feel like all the life is going to go out of the town. I mean, why wouldn't it? It's, there's no draw for anyone to come downtown. It's just going to be, you know, just a few businesses. And that's kind of the way it's, it's going. Unless we take a different turn and try to bring life back into the downtown. I was real excited, and I'll be honest. I had to just really beg my husband to go along with me to get the big house on the corner. Because I just felt like if somebody doesn't get that house and turn it into something that Christiansburg can be proud of, then, you know, what's it going to turn into? And I feel like it's the same thing right now. If we don't make a decision to preserve Christiansburg and the town, then it's, it's just going to fall down. It really is. I mean, why, why would anybody want to do anything downtown? Why would any other businesses that are worth anybody's time to come down there want to invest downtown? They won't. And, you know, I, you know, I'm just, I'm praying that the Wade's Building, that something good will happen with that. That we can revitalize Christiansburg. I mean, you, you look at Blacksburg, it looks awesome. You go downtown, you want to park and go in. You want to walk down the streets. I mean, we have a little area, but we could, we could turn that around and make it something awesome. I mean, you know, one of my goals after we finish this house is to maybe be a business owner downtown. Open a little shop or something like that. Just to bring people in, to build a community. And I just really hope and pray that y'all will reconsider this for the, the citizens of Christiansburg that have lived here and love Christiansburg and really want to see something great come of it. And I'll be honest, you know, when, I would have probably never even considered the house downtown. But when they started doing the community events and doing the, the food truck rodeo and, you know, really cleaning it up and doing some nice things downtown for the citizens, I thought, wow, this is, this is really awesome. So I pray that we can stay in that direction and think about the citizens of Christiansburg. And turn it back into something that people want to sow into. So that's just all I have to say. But I hope that you'll reconsider this vote.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on point number three? I think there's still, I'm going to disinfect. Okay? Thank you.
Well, please Serena, I have pictures of the, if you guys want to look at them. From what the site looks like right now of Cambria. I don't know if you can see it right there, but there is weeds growing everywhere.
Serena, why don't we wait for the discussion?
Yeah.
And then we can, we can share with all of us.
Yeah.
But, good point. She's ready now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Warren Rossgroth. And my family moved into 107 College Street last week, which is the property directly across from Shelton, across Shelton Street from the site under, under question. It includes the apartment building at 107 Shelton Street as well. It has in it now four tenants. So I don't, I, I also want to add my voice of caution to proceedings. It's obviously very important for my family. We, we look at that building all the time, that property all the time. And I've seen the Cambria property too, and have many of the same opinions that other people do. I've looked at the plans, and the plans always look great, you know, when the architect draws them up. But the question is what the property will become down the line. And so I guess I could add my voice of at least caution to this decision. It's obviously the largest parcel in Christiansburg. I don't know that for sure, but it's certainly the most conspicuous one in the downtown area. I also have high hopes for the downtown area. My wife, my family and I bought the house at 107 Christiansburg, the old Smith House across from the school with the purpose of remodeling, re-renovating over the years. And it's a big project. We've already started. And it really matters to, I think, I think it's really key to what the, the development of downtown is going to look like. And my goal as a, as a homeowner there is to fit into that plan and do things that help improve the town of Christiansburg. And I think it's hard to do that if there's a very large eyesore right in the middle of downtown. So I just wanted to add my voice of caution to the question.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on point number three? Not hearing anyone, we'll close quick. Didn't the Alpines wish to?
Is this the appropriate time?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tommy Crand. I'm the Assistant Superintendent Operations for Montgomery County Public Schools. Couple of things that I'd like to clarify. The building today houses many operations of Montgomery County Public Schools. Those operations consist of the alternative school, and what we refer to as the lower building. The middle building consists of the print shop, the warehouse. It also has parts of the facility offices there. The main building is completely occupied. It has technology on the first floor, professional development office as well, which was converted from the media center. On the second floor is located the school nutrition, computer lab for training, and offices for all of the facilities offices. Now I know today, some of my grounds aren't perfect. And because of the COVID situation, many of my staff work A B schedules. Today they're working five days, and in some instances six, trying to get costs back up. The district today has invested almost $180,000 into the facility. And that's in the past 12 months. So the district has a significant investment in it, and one that it intends to keep going forward. Now the request that we've got before you is Cambria is in negotiations to be sold. The garage that's currently at Cambria needs to be replaced. One thing that I've seen with Montgomery County, as I've seen with all public schools that I've been involved in, is never enough funds for maintenance. If you were a commercial business owner, you would put about a buck fifty a square foot aside for maintenance. The facilities department of Montgomery County Public Schools is 29 cents per square foot. Just what they spend on filters almost spends everything that they get. So priorities and decisions have to be made. It's not that they want to, but at the end of the day, they have to make those decisions. What the district needs to do is they have to do something with the garage that's currently at Cambria. It cannot handle the bus washing facility. So there's two courses of actions that we can take. One, we can take funds from other projects and use those funds to build a new garage, which we've been told is about $6 million. And that means some other school project, such as CHS renovations and additions, will be delayed. It has to come and come quickly. The other option is we can go to a facility that we found, and we can lease it and then convert it into a garage. But again, the problem with it is, where do I get the funding for the operating expense? And then I've got to find capital funds in order to make those improvements. So what we've asked is trying to be the best steward that we can be on that site. And I can understand everybody's concern by the yellow bus. Because that was the first question I asked when I first came to move from Richmond to Blacksburg and Christiansburg. Are you sure you want us to put a bus in the middle of downtown? And the response I received was there was no problem. As long as we did landscaping, the school system could move forward. So I understand and appreciate everybody's comments that you made. Just understand, from our standpoint, we have a significant investment in that property today. We are going to continue with that investment. And get ready to spend a quarter million dollars replacing all the windows in the main building. We spent a significance of the money with the air conditioning system, the generators, and things inside the building. We're going to continue to move forward to make the building right for our staff. What we're asking tonight with the rezoning is to move the bus component out of it into the gym. From the outside, you wouldn't know there would be a garage. From the inside of the property, if you came on the back end of Middle School Road and looked at the back end side of the gym, you would notice that's what the garage would be. One entry in and one entry out, trying to minimize the disruption in the view around the property. Now, with the garage, I have to bring buses. We bring buses to that site all the time. They have them in two years that I've been here, and the history has been, buses during the summer are on this particular site. Many of our buses, we leave at Blacksburg, Eastmont, and Auburn because it's easier for my drivers and it's less fun for us for them to get to their bus at the schools and then drive from there to their respective routes. During the summer, we have detailed maintenance issues. We deal with every bus. And we use this site as a parking lot. Today, you've got on the side over 50 Montgomery County Public Schools in cars. Bang. Used by the facilities department and used by the technology department. I haven't heard one complaint about those school sites, those assets that we're sitting with. We proposed putting the buses in the middle of the ball field. And in all likelihood, the ball field over time would go away. As we've expanded the, the media center into professional development center, there's a need for parking. We are increasing. Tomorrow, I'm going to have 50 school principals and assistant principals at the site for a meeting. We had upwards of 130 people in the professional development. I haven't heard one complaint about it. We didn't disrupt the neighborhood. We didn't disrupt traffic on B-buck. As a matter of fact, many of those folks walked into the businesses downtown to buy lunch. Now, I'll wrap it up this way. I know school systems aren't always the best neighbors. And a lot of times, it's because of money. We are trying, as Montgomery County Public Schools, to be the best neighbor we can be. With the investment we have there, would we sell the property? Right price, everything's for sale. With the investment we have there, would we sell the property, the right price, everything's for sale. We've had negotiations and getting ready to hopefully conclude them very quickly on the sale of Cambria. And our intent is to take the proceeds from the Cambria side to do the garage. Until that is done, we will not be moving forward with the garage unless we find another funding solution. At this point in time, we're still trying to tie up all the funds on the CES, CPS, and EES projects. And those will be done first before we move forward on CHS. So I apologize if I'm emotional. It's just been a long day. Any long day for us. Um, and I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to speak.
Can, can we do some questions? Is that okay if I ask any questions?
Sure.
All right.
That's up to y'all's advice.
Okay. So I see a study right here that throughout the day you will have 378 vehicles. Or in, for in this instance, it will be a mix buses and cars throughout the day. That means 378 cars, buses coming in, 378 buses going out. That's a very different number than what you're telling me.
You wouldn't say 378 vehicles. You've got sitting there right now today, between the individuals that drive, facilities van, and technology, approximately 50. You've also got between Montgomery Central School, my warehouse, uh, and then management that's in that building, probably about another 30 to 35 vehicles. So at any time, you see about 85 there. Now, with the professional development situation, when it gets used, you do see an increase in the number of cars. Like I said, we've seen a max of 130. And what we try to do, because there is limited parking on that site, is those days that we do big events, is we try to get our operations out of the building as early as possible to minimize any traffic flow. For example, my facilities group starts their day at six. So they're able to get in, get their assets and get out. Um, technology, we brought them in early for the same reason when we had the big events. With the bus garage, if you go to Cambria, you have about 60 to 70 buses there at any given point in time. Of that number, about 30 are spare buses. They do not go out on the road. The other buses do roll here inside the Christiansburg community. We don't, um, as a general rule, we have any of our buses in the Christiansburg strand located at a school. We keep those, uh, at Cambria. Now, going forward, that, if that as a condition, um, I could keep buses at the school, just like I do at Blacksburg Middle today, Auburn, and Eastmont. We could do something similar in Christiansburg Middle School if we had to.
Sir, I really like the fact that you said that you keep lots of the buses in Auburn. Why doesn't the county school board sell the property or sell a big portion of the downtown property instead of making it a bus parking lot in the middle of town? Instead, use those, that money, use the money from Cambria and purchase another property somewhere else? That it would be easier because Christiansburg citizens, I think the majority of them will agree that we are tired of having the old schools. I came from Colombia and I have been in many countries that are third world countries. And I cannot really tell you, our country is going to look half of the way the ones in Christiansburg look like. We have primary school. I have four kids. My kids go to school in this, in this town. They were raised up here and it's a shame that we have to send our kids to trailer sometimes. The primary school is a shame that kids have to go to school, to that school. Elementary school, the same thing, and the high school just kind of literally looks like a jail. And at the same time, here in Blacksburg, getting brand new schools, Reiner got schools. They get fire departments and I know some of these departments don't have nothing to do with public schools. But if Christiansburg is like the money paid for all these projects. But yeah, when we're telling you, we don't want buses in the middle of our downtown, we get told that if we don't allow this to happen, you're going to use our funds from our schools to be putting into these projects. That's not fair to our Christiansburg citizens. How do you think I feel as a parent of four children that go to school? And they go to that kind of schools we have in the town of Christiansburg. It's a shame that we want to use almost 17 acres downtown to be a bus stop. So it can look like this. And the other side, and it hasn't been taken care of, it looks like a dump. I mean, you got weeds, you got trees, you got metal fences falling apart, you got steps falling apart. You got, this is, who wants this in the middle of the downtown Christiansburg? From where do you say you came from?
I came from Richmond. I was the superintendent. You want to see bad schools? I'll take your bad schools.
Well, I can go back to.
None of my schools here are even close.
Well, the schools over here, I expect better.
Let's, let's.
I mean, from a whole, hold on. From the school perspective.
Excuse me. I'm going to put a hold on this right now.
Okay.
What we're doing here is we're asking questions of the superintendent here, assistant superintendent. And that's what we want to do is to get some information on everything that is going on, the aspect of this move and what it relates to. So let's limit our questions to concerns and let's hold back our, some of our other comments so we can move on.
Can I address the funding issue, please? Because I think from the school's perspective.
I, I, I think I'll, if I could, I would like to make a comment and then ask my question because it answers part of your question. Um, five years ago, I sat in a school board meeting. It was five, about five hours long. And they went through an entire list of every school and what needed to be done and made a very hard decision on what school was going to get done with, based on the needs. The roof fell in. Things had to change. But I have seen them try to stick to the list. Now, the bus here is a different story. I think that gas means it's important, but our kids are important too. But don't, schools already have a limited budget. So saying that their, their schools are bad from an infrastructure standpoint, and just calling out Christiansburg is not true. They made a very hard decision to make a list. And they've stuck to that list as hard as it is. Now, do I have problems with the school? Absolutely. I mean, the left sidewalks is my biggest concern. The town has had to pay to put sidewalks in many Christiansburg schools. But don't attack someone who has limited resources and already made all the hard decisions before coming.
So when we are giving, I know the county gave over $2 million to Blacksburg to develop business incubators for the old middle school. Why isn't the county giving us this money?
They put the money into the pot and they're working out the list. It's not like they said, oh, we got the money from Blacksburg, so it's got to go to Blacksburg. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Can you explain that? Because that's a different, that's.
I'll give it to my best shot because I was before my time. Um, the proceeds that came from the Blacksburg Middle School transaction did get set aside for schools as capital projects came up. Um, we are working right now finalizing the plans on CES, CPS, and EES. Um, we're, we are spending about a million dollars just on the design and trying to go through the permitting process as we speak. You will see trailers at CES gone for 20, for FY22. They'll be in place this year and then the following year they're completely gone if we maintain our construction schedule, which hopefully we do. CPS will have five trailers in place for the next two years. We've gotten rid of one of the trailers. There's two in the back and then there was four on the side. We've gotten rid of one in storage units. We've had to move the other three just to keep the number of classes for the school as we do our construction. And we anticipate that we can move the trailers out once we've done the addition, which we're doing first in FY21, and then do the renovation and CPS. Um, once we've completed that, then we can move the trailers out. So all the trailers will be gone in Christiansburg strand. Um, no later, again, if we stay on our schedule, for FY22. Christiansburg High School, we estimated very preliminarily that it would cost about $70 million to do the additions and renovations in that school. Christiansburg High School, a typical high school classroom should be about 850 to 950 square feet. You go into some of the classrooms in Christiansburg High, it's less than 600 square feet. We've got kids, 15, 20 kids that are sitting in, in space that really should be maybe eight or nine students in that space. The building's old. Um, the building has challenges, as a number of the buildings in the school system did. Um, we don't know with the county, when we, when they did their bond issue for this year, um, which was $35 million all in. Um, and we're now trying to take the design we've done from meetings with the superintendent, the chief academic officer, the head of elementary education, all of the, the school principals, their staff, uh, and then many of them broke that down to leadership teams or subject matter teams or grade teams. So we've taken all that and come up with the design that we've now submitted to the town as well as the county on, 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 for their approval. Um, and we're hopefully, we'll get that in the next 30 days that we can actually start site construction in July. The portables have been moved. We were given our permits for that. We've done that piece. So at, at CES, you'll notice the two portables are in the ball field. One's been moved up and over. The other one's been moved to the other side. If you go over to CPS, you'll notice this week, the footers are all in on the backside of the property and those trailers will be moved this week. Um, so we're moving forward. We're getting that done. CHS is going to be another. The timing of CHS will depend on when the county wants to do the bond issue. Um, our hope is that we have some money in the two and a half cents that give the schools, you know, that's set aside and which is about 2.146 million today. Um, our hope is, was to use that to start CHS. However, because the numbers are coming in higher on CES, CPS, EES, it appears that we have to take a part, a part of those dollars and use that to complete here, you know, with furniture fixtures and the technology. Hopefully, we can start the design because I think the design of CHS will take a pretty good time. Uh, because you're really going to take the whole inside of that building and I call it, blow it up. You're going to start all of it. And, and who knows what it's going to look like. There's lots of possibilities on that side. And, and I think it'll be a long process to get, you know, a consensus and get the excitement that we've currently got the CES, CPS, and EES. But, um, you know, that's our plan right now.
I appreciate you telling us that.
I'm going to stop here. And I think, good questions. Thank you for your input, but let's stay on focus.
Okay.
So I think there's a lot of questions that everyone has about the whole school system, how it relates to, to Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and so on. But let's stay on target. What we're looking at is a rezoning of land right now. And let's leave our questions to that rezoning and then we'll move on to number point, uh, point four, which is a conditional use permit dealing with the same property.
Correct.
So, um, I'd like to just move on to point number four. I have a question on point number three. Ask away.
If I understood you correctly, and I may not have, so I'm going to ask you again. You stated that businesses, commercial businesses set aside a dollar something for maintenance in the school setting aside 29 cents.
Correct.
So in a sense, you're admitting that you don't have funds to maintain the facility department.
Correct.
Having driven by there today on my way in from Radford, I was in Radford on business and drove in. And I came that way intentionally to look at that site. And you said you have not had a complaint. Allow, allow me to be the first.
Okay.
The parking structure that you have there did not have that many cars, I believe. You said 50 cars today, or daily. And they were all over the place. There was no rural organization. And again, going by the comments that people are making, you're coming into town and seeing them. So my question is, if you only have 29 cents and you're already admitting that, that most of that's being used for something else.
Correct.
Then I don't know how you're going to maintain the facility. But I, I agree with what people are saying.
Well, I was at the site. Yeah, I was at the site. I saw the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, we're sitting down in this existing lot here and mostly that's the maintenance vehicles and they're all over the place.
Yeah, they were.
Okay.
They looked terrible.
It really did. Um, and then into where the gym's at, you, you see more of the technology is, is kind of working against and that they like to be by this door, going to the first floor entrance. Our intent is when we make this, when we expand the parking here, that all of this and all of that goes into the sign spots here. Um, we, we've been slow moving on the, on the sign because once I do a sign, I'm going to hear more crying and screaming and we don't have to be, you know, than what we had. Because as we moved into here, we did it in phases. And technology was first. And then we brought the other team in. So we're going to clean up two parts in the front. And if you come out there tomorrow, you'll see a full. And that shouldn't be, that should be more for visitors. And we don't get that many visitors and it needs to be open. Our intent is to take all of this, all of that, and what we got here, we put it basically in here with the sign spots. So that it looks a little bit cleaner and more compact than what you got right.
All right. That would settle that problem, but how do you resolve the problem of not having the funds to maintain the school?
Well, new question. Um, we've got, we're taking funds from CHS and the floty project. That's, that, we have our temporary certificate of occupancy. We'll use that to complete the windows and painting here that's on this building. Because those are really older windows, but the stuff that's in the left. Okay. If you notice right here where we did the, uh, generator and AC unit, we put one of the windows, so we tried some different looks to make sure it's what we wanted. We liked that and we, we've got a request in the OCS. We're waiting on our 20-day period. Once we get that, we'll do all the windows first and second, fourth facing this way. Perfect. Then we're going to come on the backs, on the sides and paint. And we also got to clean up on that entryway off of Stedman, which is in between the gym and the main building right about here. Um, it's broken concrete. It's just kind of a little bit of everything. We're going to internally, once we're in, do that ourselves and try to save a few dollars.
My problem is I don't see any guarantees of how the property's going to be maintained. Yet because when push comes to shove and I realize that, I'm counting on it. I realize how those numbers have to fall.
Right.
But at the same time, if you don't have the money going in, and this is going to be in the heart of downtown, I have to regular what everyone has said so far, that if you don't have the, the funds to, to maintain it, it comes down to it, that greenery that's all on the outside, it's going to be another disaster like Cambria. You couldn't, you won't have the funds to keep it up.
The difference you've got, and, and this, this is reality, so it's not a make-believe story. You know, and I know that if you get people coming to the site, all of a sudden it gets maintained. So what happens here at this site is you have the superintendent, you have the school board, you have the leadership of the district using the asset. Because they're using the asset, things get nothing. When we cut the ball field, we cut most of all the grounds that are on that particular property. They know that if the superintendent comes out and like tomorrow, the event that they got with the principal, if that wasn't cut and looked presentable, you know, you know what I'm saying? You're going to get the negative phone calls. So Cambria was not a facility that got used for anything other than a storage facility. That was a hodgepodge of a lot of things. This here was a building, the three buildings were built pretty good. I'm not saying they don't have issues because I know they have issues. Um, but it's a lot better investment from a school system standpoint on this site because they got an extended life than if you invested dollars on the Cambria site.
Well, I guess I, I, I see what you're saying, but I think past history, if you go back to the facility off of Park Street, the superintendent, and everyone was in that building, and that building wasn't that well maintained. That's why you moved into the county.
That's what I've heard. That's the story they're saying.
Can you, can you put the math up to me as I, what's history when I used to, for coming in and coming out of the buses and everything else?
So our intent, so this would be the entryway into the garage and the exit out of the garage. So this would all open up and this is where our buses would go in and out. Our intent is the buses come down and every bus will have to take a right. Our intent is the buses come down and every bus will have to take a right hand turn.
So that's College Street, right?
This is Stedman. So they come and they take a right, go to college and you can take a left or a right to proceed to where their family's at. We wouldn't have anybody come out and we're really against any of our employees as well coming out here and trying to take a left. Just because there is some blind spots and we think it's a lot, it's a much safer term. Coming to the right and not getting any bus to go to the left. And these buses would be going to follow the branches on them, Christiansburg Mills on them. Uh, and then you're gonna have some going back into, for CHS. You know, where we pick up in other parts of the Christiansburg.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, move on and I'd like to go ahead and close, um, point number three. Hold your questions. Um, let's get through number four and as we go through number four, we're gonna open it up to our discussion. We're not gonna wait till the next public hearing, uh, five and six. So in between those, we will have our discussion. Okay? That way everyone will still be here. You'll be here and we can ask our questions.
Okay.
Okay. So closing point number three, opening public hearing, uh, point number four, public hearing for conditional use permit request. Contingent upon the preceding item by Montgomery County School Board for commercial garage, maintenance shop and contractor storage yard on property located at two oh eight College Street Northwest Tax Map Number five two six dash A dash one seven five in the B three general business district. The property is designated as downtown mixed use on the future land use map of two thousand thirteen Christiansburg comprehensive plan. So we've had speak, people speak on point number three. I'd like to open it up now. Is there any other one that'd like to speak on the public hearing? Point number four on the conditional use permit.
Let me ask you something. There's like two, um, emails today. Um, as far as the public hearings for this, um, can we have Will or you or whatever we've done? How long?
We, we can. And why don't we close point number four and go right into discussion?
I understand.
Okay. So, uh, having no one speak, uh, let's go into discussion and I'll open it up to commissioners. Uh, ask away. Now's your time to ask the questions and, um, Joanna, you can share your photos as well. Um, and then Will, if, do you have, uh, can you tell the copies of the letters that were sent today also?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, that would be great. I can bring those up on the screen. That would be great. I'll bring it up on the screen. I'll go there. And this is the Cambria site.
Yes.
Are we willing to ask any more questions while you're, nevermind we found it.
I'm sorry.
Can someone use them all while?
Yeah, Will, would you mind? Do you have a question?
Okay, the first is, uh, was received from downtown Christiansburg. Whereas downtown Christiansburg Incorporated, D C I, a commercial district affiliate of the Virginia Main Street Program, maintains a vision to establish downtown Christiansburg as a destination and economically viable simple business district and a vibrant center for culture and community. And whereas the mission of D C I supports the revitalization and promotion of downtown Christiansburg as a destination for visitors, a warm home for residents and a vibrant economic center for businesses. Whereas the town of Christiansburg Planning Commission will consider a request from Montgomery County Public Schools to rezonate sixteen point six six acre property at two oh eight College Street Northwest, which contains the Old Christiansburg Middle School and a conditional use permit for a commercial garage, maintenance shop and contractor storage yard. And whereas the College Street and Depot Street corridors are home to various existing businesses, residences that can contribute to the unique character of downtown Christiansburg. And whereas Rufford Road serves as a primary entrance to our historic district, uh, excuse me, historic downtown commercial district and the gateway to our downtown businesses. And whereas the rezoning of the Old Christiansburg Middle School property to B three general business will provide greater flexibility for future mixed use development of the property and potential adaptive reuse of the restored buildings on the site as the Old Christiansburg Middle School property holds great potential for future development to strengthen downtown Christiansburg. Whereas the D C I Board of Directors feels further studying considerations should be given for better future use for the Old Christiansburg Middle School site. Whereas the proposed use for a commercial garage, maintenance shop and contractor storage yard could alter the visual character of College Street, Depot Street and Radford Road corridors. Be it resolved, the D C I Board of Directors supports the rezoning of the Old Christiansburg Middle School property to support future mixed use development of the site. And therefore be it resolved that the D C I Board of Directors urges the town of Christiansburg Planning Commission to place a position on the proposed conditional use permit that's being installed to mitigate the visual impacts of the commercial garage, maintenance shop and contractor storage yard on surrounding properties and indoor corridors. And therefore, let it resolve that the D C I Board of Directors encourages the town of Christiansburg and Montgomery County Public Schools to further study the feasibility of more appropriate future uses for this property that would support the community's vision of a vibrant downtown. And therefore let it be further resolved that the D C I Board of Directors offers its experience and assistance to build the town of Christiansburg and Montgomery County Public Schools to develop a vision for the future of this important downtown asset.
Thank you, Will.
This was the second comment that we received today from Sharon David Brockman who's at seventeen West Moon Street, Dear Planning Commissioner. It has recently come to our attention that there's a proposal to rezonate the Old Christiansburg Middle School property. A year ago, a longtime and current M C P S employee showed plans she had heard. Essentially, the O C M S will soon no longer be used as a school. I know the county rather than the town owns the property. The taxpayers of both the town and county, however, those facilities ought to continue to be used in school buildings, especially in light of the expensive remodel undertaken several years ago in O C M S. Served as the temporary home of Blacksburg Middle School. Additionally, the gym and field space is at a premium in the town and county. The O C M S fills a community need in those spaces well. Again, I know M C P S ultimately determines how its properties will utilize it for numerous reasons, it's one of the district's zoning requests, not in the best interest of the residents of both Christiansburgs and Montgomery County as a whole. The third written comment came in from, this, so this came in from, uh, you can picture the cells. Dear town leaders, the proposal to allow a bus depot garage to the Old Christiansburg Middle School location would be a great disservice to the community, which likely would cement the use of that property for the years to come. Providing such permit would add implications to the future use of that land, make it less attractive for future redevelopment of is heavy truck traffic and bus traffic what we want for the downtown vicinity? We ask as planning commission and town council members that you take a step back, use long-term vision to think about the grand scheme for this piece of prime historical property. You should seriously look at the request and make the right choice for the future of downtown Christiansburg. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to the public and cannot allow access to come to mechanical or industrial use. This property would be perfect for a mixed use project. It would incorporate residential office, light commercial, eateries, vocational, educational use and green space. Every intention should be to preserve the old historic structure, tear everything else down and build a great development of town and be private for the years to come. A project like this would be a catalyst for sorely needed downtown revitalization. It would provide a much needed economic boost and allow for the growth of the local economy, which internally raised tax revenues and allowed the town and county to invest more money into things like public works in the school system. Bus garages need to be located in industrial parks on the outskirts of town away from the view of the general public. The project that I envisioning draw a lot of parallels to the redevelopment of the Old Blacksburg Middle School project in this midtown.
Well, and hell, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
An unforeseen circumstance. I T is pushing out an update. It will shut down my computer and they can't stop it. And I am hosting the meeting, so I'm going to end this meeting, make one of those computers the host. We just need to stop talking for like five minutes while I do that and then we'll be live again. But there will be a disconnection for a second for everybody.
So why don't we take that plan and move it forward?
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're back live. All right. So I'd like to make just a few comments to start off our discussions. I thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, very good discussions and, uh, Mr. Grant, uh, I do appreciate your highlights. Uh, I've, you've educated me quite a bit tonight on that building. I didn't know all the, the facilities, the info, uh, um, tech, the, uh, warehouse, transportation. I didn't realize that all that was in that building, uh, today. So I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, a little history, uh, two of my older kids did go to that, uh, middle school, so, um, I do realize, uh, what shape it was then and what shape it is now. So I applaud you in, in looking at the windows and doing the updates that you're doing today. I appreciate that. So, um, I do have a comment that I, and a question. Um, having children growing up, uh, through Christiansburg, uh, school system, uh, one of my biggest concerns was, uh, sports fields and the limitations that Christiansburg had on sports fields and facilities, uh, relating to sports, uh, for Christiansburg. And, uh, I do know that that gym is used or was used, uh, quite often for, uh, say volleyball or other school events. Uh, so that would be a concern. Uh, as well as, uh, removing another field in Christiansburg that's utilized, uh, for the, uh, storage or the parking of buses. So those are, are, I, I just wanted to ask you the question that it is being used for, uh, after school activities uh, by Christiansburg High School and other schools?
Primarily Christiansburg.
Okay. And that those fields are being used in the Christiansburg rec center today?
Correct. Football are primarily used during football season. Also, you'll see, uh, lacrosse, there's some lacrosse teams that practice out there. Um, and we also have some soccer groups that, that as well practice, um, on that particular.
Okay. All right. Great. I just wanted to make sure I, I was thinking clearly.
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay. So, uh, commissioners, now's your time to ask questions.
I have a lot. All right. Um, I guess my question is, I know that there has been issues in the past on the Cambria side. Um, what would you recommend as far as TADI or KMS to be, let's just say this idea was to pass? What are your solutions as far as, um, what to do with them? Because I mean, we are in the middle of downtown. Um, you have some residences, uh, around it. It's not just businesses down there. We've got a lot of apartments, uh, that buy paper, you know, several, several apartments on the town. And so, um, we own downtown on the other side. So this necessarily would not affect us, but is that gonna affect the consequences?
Correct.
Um, so can you tell me a little bit about if you guys have any plans if that was to be the, the rezon?
Right.
I'm in your favor. What are your plans as far as that?
Well, number one, we propose along the, the fence line that divides what we call the upper field from the lower field. Um, putting in a new fence that's very similar to what we've done at CHS on the athletic project, kind of did the look that we'll use as a standard approach. Um, so we would, we would put in, it's a black fence with slats in it. Uh, that would be a football. Then we did a double line of trees and greenery that, uh, would create a sound buffer, leaving this space, uh, continually that space that could be used. Um, you know, the smaller rec team could do that for football. Um, but you're gonna be limited obviously because of the size of, of the, of the property and how many teams can practice there. Whereas here, rec ball, because I coached it for many years, you know, you can put four to sixteen on here for E A. When you come here, you're probably gonna get two to three max, uh, because it's just a different, uh, dimension. And you won't put, you won't get the same benefit there for older teams. And then you'll, you'll, uh, you know, here you can work on the passing. You can do passing this way, but then you're taking up the whole field. You can do the running drills and all that works, but you wouldn't be able to like in football on that particular spot. Um, the other thing that you would see is this would be, you know, we would, instead of just having like a Cambria where you got a shed and it's open and you'll see equipment just sitting in it, um, that's been there, you know, it seems like forever. Some of that equipment is sitting in it. We would enclose all of these. So again, when you come on the property, it doesn't give you the look of a garage. Okay? We don't need that. Cambria's gotten a disrepair. I've admitted that. I've, I've continued this. I have. That's not a shadow of my facilities being used, just been challenged. It's the school system matter. We can't let this property do the same thing. If for one rea, two reasons. One, it is in the center of the town. It is in the center of town. Number two, what, what we're doing in the professional development center, you know, it also becomes an asset to the district. And we do see lots of people using that facility more so than I thought was gonna use it. It's, it's allowed us, what we've done in there, um, not rent facilities like we used to. Uh, we're able to use our own facility and, and the technology we have in there. And I would encourage y'all, I mean, y'all are thinking about this, to, to call me. I was glad to give you the full property and, and let you see it. Um, you may have uses that we haven't even thought of. But we want this to be a community spot. We want our schools to be communal. That's the way we all get along by, making it communal. So, um, that's our, that, that's how we would try to address your concerns. Now, the, I have buses rolling out of here. The first bus rolls out by the hour five thirty in the morning. I go to the government school. It's one, it's one bus. Um, then we roll out to the Roman Oak on special education. We have one, this year we used to have two. This year we're only gonna have one. That rolls out to the shop at about six o'clock. And then the majority of these buses are rolling onto the street between six forty-five and seven o'clock. Because Christiansburg's strange, so much smaller, we're able, I don't have as many of my buses pulling out much longer. Okay? Um, we used to have a bus to Blacksburg in Christiansburg that left the shop at six ten. I don't have a bus to get out, but they're gonna not pay the route. But we down with that bus to Blacksburg and we don't have the same distance as we used to.
Well, um, thank you so much for answering that. I have, um, how much, um, what are you doing to, to fix the water runoff, um, issues? Uh, as you well know, commercial property here in the town, residential, the old K F E.
Right.
Uh, it's pretty tight as well to take care of that. Um, with you having a bus parked in the middle of our downtown, we have creeks that go by there. We really have problems in college.
Mm-hmm.
We have homes that have over four feet of water on their basements and stuff like that. We have homes that have over four feet of water on their basements and stuff like that. What are you guys' plans to take care of all of, because there is a creek going right under the property?
Right.
How would you take care of all those problems?
We have to develop, we have to develop a water mitigation plan that's consistent with both state and federal laws. And that's something, if we go from what we've done today, and doing what we've done today didn't require us to do that. Once we disturb the soil, we have to come up with that plan. And then all likely that, we're going to have to buy nutrient credits because we can't do a swap with land. For us, in those nutrient credits, I had to buy the nutrient credits at C H S and the athletic project. They're not cheap. It's intended to make you think about really the plan you've got to ensure. Because we don't want, you know, right now, I can't use Cambria to wash buses unless I go through a big manual process. And it's just not efficient. And we would, and here, we don't even have that. We talked about possibility, we would have to have a plan that's going to have to be signed off by the federal government. And that's not going to be an easy approval for us on how to wash buses. As we go into this, if you were to print this, I mean, here's a long step before we get to construction. The biggest thing would be getting the funding. The second biggest thing is ensuring that I've got the plan that's going to be approved of the state and federal government board. Then once those are done, then you would see us do new construction. But that will take some time, it's not going to be easy process.
Sir, have you, thank you so much for answering that. Have you guys considered, have you even tried to even think outside the box and see if you can sell a chunk of that land so you can purchase another land that is not an eyesore for the town of Christiansburg in the middle of town?
We haven't on that, we would consider, we are in conversations with a company that has done a transaction with the school system many, many years ago. And we're talking to them on sale of the Cambria property.
I'm talking about downtown?
Yeah, we, as a school system, the system thought, three to five years ago, they did an appraisal thinking that it was going to be purchased by some local authority. I don't know if it was the county or the town, but they thought it was going to be, and it didn't materialize. But we would be very receptive to anybody that wanted to talk about possible acquisitions.
Do you know what that estimated price was?
I've seen the appraisal, it was a little over eight million dollars. But, you know, and I know appraisals are, I haven't read it word for word to tell you how big was the assumption and what was their highest investment issue in the property, but that was an approximation.
Well, how much money do you expect if you were to sell the Cambria location?
Probably about a million dollars, correct.
And then, because we, the town of Christiansburg, I don't know if you're aware of this, we have been spending a lot of money over the years on A D R C grants and projects and things like that. And some of the points that were highlighted by this thing that was done by the town of Christiansburg in the planning department, some of those things say something like this. More intentional traffic calming measures for the downtown. We're going to have over three hundred buses and different vehicles going in and out through the day. If the bus stops. Another thing was on downtown. Increase downtown residential with second story housing utilized history tax credits, which, that's another point. Partner with an existing business owners, developers, work with target investors and explore creative mixed-use development opportunities. Consider opportunities to purchase additional downtown property for green space. That would be the town of Christiansburg or the county. Consider zoning ordinance revisions with forage, vibrant dining, dining, experiential businesses on ground floor or designated areas downtown. Encourage development to in-field buildings. I mean, the list goes on. And explore micro retail opportunities for ground floor level businesses to allow development in small businesses, startups. Encourage downtown business owners to be represented by D C I boards and things like that. The town of Christiansburg has a, is trying to come up with a plan for our downtown, to unify the downtown. They're giving out grants for the fixing of the outside of the buildings and things like that. And here, the Montgomery County School Board comes in with this. Not so great project. I tell you another thing that we were discussing a minute ago. A lot of parents, a lot of us are parents here. And like I said, we have four kids. And with the COVID game and stuff, I see the use of a building like this just like it was used in the past by the high school in Blacksburg. They came over here, right now, the planning for the county school board is to send the kids four days a week, three hours a day. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay, if you were to have different buildings around the, around town or the county, there is chances, wouldn't you say that I am correct, that you can probably have kids in different places so they can actually get more of education? So parents like me can actually go to work for a living? I mean, those are things.
If that building was empty, I'd say correct, but today, there is no way I can get that building ready to open for school and all that stuff down.
Do you have classes there, some classes?
Right now, we're not spacing. The only space, we're not utilizing right now with gym.
Okay, so my advice, and this is just my personal opinion with a lot of people that are in the town, I would say we would like to see more parks, apartments, offices, businesses, incubators downtown, even probably a college downtown. Instead of a bus parking lot. Why isn't Blacksburg, why, why didn't the Montgomery County Public School System do that in Blacksburg? They had two big lots to play with, the Blacksburg School and the Middle School.
But most of the land above Blacksburg Middle and Blacksburg High, when those transactions was done, was given back to the town of Blacksburg.
And why are we giving this almost seventeen acres to the town of Christiansburg?
Well, the town of Blacksburg paid for it. They put substantial sum of money. So it wasn't just an in-kind swap. You know, if there's an interest on the part of the town to acquire the property, I would encourage the town to give us a proposal. Everything that the district has, you know, the superintendent has, it's up to sale. The challenge the school system would have is that with the moves that have been made to that side, if we sell it, is having enough funds to kick out everything there, move it to another location.
Will it be a consideration that you can just keep what you have there and fix it? And get probably some of those historic buildings? There's all kinds of grants that you can probably.
Well, since we don't get taxes, there's sort of tax credits, those are benefits to the school system. But you are correct in that in those buildings, as long as you stay inside four walls, those buildings I think would qualify for the store cash.
Okay, so we can have those offices now downtown, which is what downtown Christiansburg will need. Because not only that will have people that will be able to shop in our nice downtown, but then if you sell the other piece of land and it's developing to a really nice something, that will help with everything that the town of Christiansburg is investing money into, that will kind of go along better with, I think, the majority of the population of the town of Christiansburg.
I understand, I understand fully what you're saying, but I think that the challenge would be is the cost of picking up everything I have in that facility and moving it somewhere.
But can you explain to me, why do you have to move everything when you can keep a lot of those? The buildings will still be there. The only thing that you really, really need to move will be the buses and the garage.
Right now, I don't have the bus there, I don't have the garage there.
But what I'm saying is you can buy another piece of land if you were to sell the piece of land, a part of the downtown piece of land that you have, that's seventeen acres, almost.
Well, but the buildings on, I would sell the buildings.
That's what I'm saying, keep the buildings and sell some of the land. I'm not saying sell it all, so you still keep, I mean, I am happy that you guys are downtown. I am grateful that you came out and you are wanting to invest into that building. I am grateful that the school system is thinking to fix those buildings. Because just like he said, his children went to that school, a lot of kids in this town went to that school and a lot of people in this town went to school. So I think we're happy with what, part of what you're saying. It's just come up with that, with some ideas of what you can do with the rest of the land. And he's not a boss in the middle of downtown.
So let me jump in and ask an additional question. I think you preluded to, some of the buses are being stored in Blacksburg now, some are being stored in Ryder.
Correct.
And your goal, and don't let me put words in your mouth, is to centralize that in Christiansburg and have a maintenance facility there and extend the parking lot and have that being a central location?
Not quite, would be intended as the garage would be central.
Okay.
And so, for example, when I bring a bus in Blacksburg to the service today, one of my maintenance team will drive the bus to the site and swap it out. So the driver would have a different bus number for the next day or a couple days, that's there. All we would store at the site and then we store to that Cambria would be our spare buses, old Christiansburg Strand buses. And, you know, if we've gotten any from a service. But generally, the service buses, it's a swap of the spare bus for a service, you know, to bring the bus in for service.
And the average trips that we're looking at here on transportation, would that, we're looking at that, would that take into consideration not just bus traffic going in and out, but all the maintenance, what a bus is required? Which is pretty hard to do, in my opinion, is you don't know when a bus is going to break down. I guess you can do it on an average. We have to repair so many buses and they have to go to the maintenance shop. So I guess I'm trying to get a full picture of this to say that, okay, how many buses are really going to be staged there full time, in and out every day? And how many buses are really only going there on a temporary basis to get prepared?
I would venture to say, and I'll defer to my director of transportation, but it'll be about sixty. If I go count the buses at Cambria, come on, boy, I'll have approximately sixty buses there. And what we have at Cambria on any given day is about, there's not a dramatic change. Is what I would expect you to see here at this facility.
Okay?
What is happening to Montgomery Central? What is going to happen once you move all those buses there? Are you going to still keep those there?
Yes, ma'am.
How many buses do you anticipate? You said that's going to be the main, our bus wash.
Correct.
So you're going to have, besides the service buses coming into service, you're going to have buses coming in to be washed?
Now, we do wash and part of the servicing, because by law, we have to service our buses every forty-five days. So with what the limited space that we will have there, while we have a Cambria, you can't do a bus wash at any time you want to. You know, it's tied to your service and stuff. So when we service the bus, we also will wash it at that time.
You mentioned earlier, and I can foresee a major problem given the water runoff when you wash those buses, I presume there's various chemicals involved.
Correct.
And all that eventually ends up in the river, so you're going to have to.
Yeah, it's very strict.
Yeah.
Actually, that's what started this whole conversation, was we operate under the term of the county. And the regulatory body did a bit, wasn't intentional, they weren't trying to get anybody, it was just trying to come to inspection. And Cambria, you know, just, it failed. There's no easy way today to capture. So what we do is when we use it during the summer, we basically build a boom. We cut out part of the concrete, we use the cutout in the boom to contain it. Is it, it passes muster, but I got to tell you, are we able to capture a hundred percent of the water in that circle? And it's not a common, you know, that's just a stopgap.
Can you explain the nutrition credit? Is that the word?
The nutrition group or the store tax credit?
The credit that you were referring to.
So you get, in order to help with your financing, you have like, let's take, let's take the buildings that are on the campus right now at, we call it old C M I's for operations. You get both. Because of their age, you do any work inside the four walls of those buildings. The work that you do inside those walls are qualified for a credit. An investor, you sell your credit, an investor will pay generally in space on the market, which varies, there was about seventy-five cents to ninety cents on the dollar, that qualifies. And so after one year, when the building's open, that investor pays you whatever the amount of credit is, provided the deduction at the end of that year. And then you're able to reduce your financing costs. It's a very significant program. Now, if for example, you had to replace the A C system, since it's outside the four walls, it would walk. If, now you had to duck it, once you got inside the building, your ductwork would qualify for the credit. So it becomes an accounting nightmare, I'm going to say that as well. It becomes an accounting nightmare because it's a tough audit. But it's a very attractive way to help finance transactions.
So were your windows part of that?
Well, we, again, we don't, because we're not a tax paying entity, the credit has no value to us as a system. Now, if somebody were to step up today, yes, ma'am, they would. Now, when we took that outside covering, you know, in the front of the building that went from the main building to the warehouse to the school, we took that down. And we took that down for safety reasons, it was so old. When we add up onto the roof, nobody, I don't care how much, how little they weigh, you couldn't safely go on it. But that wouldn't qualify because it wasn't inside the building.
Mr. Krantz, I have another question. As I mentioned several times, the runoff, you mentioned the runoff plan. We do have runoff issues in Christiansburg and they can be very expensive. So we're looking at making a decision here before any plan is put together. What are the chances of us going forward with something like this and then you coming back with a plan that's going to be extremely expensive? And who's responsible for that?
Well, it's the school system. They have the ultimate responsibility and.
And can they afford a plan such as a very expensive plan that may result in runoff water, additional runoff water leading from washing numerous buses?
We depend on the plumbing situation at that time. We're having the discussion now on C E S and C P S. A significant part of that project was to extend that drive to White's line going through V dock. And that doesn't appear to be that we're going to get those funds. So, you know, it makes you change the whole way, you know, what you were thinking you were going to do.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that I personally too, is the funding and maintaining the property and, you know, just seeing a futuristic plan of where all the funds would come from. If something like this were to come.
Well, the funds to develop the property would come from the county, I would think, in the two and a half cents that they set aside of their real estate tax for us. With COVID, they pregnant this time, hopefully it clears up here in August or September. But I would think that would be the primary funding source for any major work on the site. The other source for this site would be if the sale to Cambria were to take place, those funds could be used. If we would sell a parcel of the land, those proceeds could be used. I mean, I do think that, as I said at the beginning, I fully understand everybody's concerns. You're in the heart of downtown Christiansburg. Is that the highest and best use of that property? You know? But as a school system. But as a school system, we'll do everything we can to be good steward, because we're here for the long haul. And the relationship between the schools and the town of Christiansburg has always been good. There's times we disagree, but that's part of relationships. But it's always been solid. I mean, you made a donation in graduation of the state. And that was a significant part of allowing us to pull off the graduation of junior tech that I think was a great success. Christiansburg had police officers there, along with state police, town of Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech. And even the city of Radford sent two officers there for a brief time. So, I mean, I think we're here for the long haul. I don't like the way our buildings look, I'll tell you that, ma'am. But, you know, I can't sit here and give you a rosy picture and tell you I can guarantee we're gonna keep them all up, because again, there's times I gotta make decisions for my prioritization and, and, you know, I can't always spend everything I'd like to spend, any of that, but...
Other commissioners? Comments, questions?
There's a thing about that.
Here's my thoughts on it. There's a lot to take care of.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there's, maybe even worthwhile, and you offered it, maybe even a site visit.
Please, take me up on it.
To the extent that, and well, don't, I mean, go out of order here, but, you know, to the extent that maybe we have a field trip and we visit the facility and see exactly what is housed there today. And getting a visual picture of it is always very helpful. And then, the proffers that you had mentioned, the fences where that would be put, and just exactly how it would look, you know, and walk us through it. So that's where I would, I'm leaning towards tonight, is there's a lot here to take care of, so...
I would say as a school system, we would love to have you and recommend that you take that action. See it before you vote, before you make a decision. Come see it, let us show, I ask two things. One, I'd like to thank y'all for giving us an opportunity to talk with y'all.
Absolutely.
Number two, I'll be out July 2nd, and won't be back in the office until, what's that, Monday after?
July 6th.
No, I'm going that way. It's my thirty-eighth wedding anniversary, and I haven't taken any time off in fourteen months.
Thirty-eight, now we're thirty-nine.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll be back the following month, so the fourteenth.
I guess.
So just leave that window. Any other time, I'll make my schedule fit y'all's schedule. You wanna do it in the evening, you just tell us, we'll make it fit.
I just wanna know, it says June twenty-ninth, which is next Monday for our next meeting. Am I correct?
That's correct, so this will, this, this would be scheduled to come back to you all next week. It will go to town council on July fourteenth. If, I mean, this is a compressed schedule, because we're kinda getting back to these kind of things. You all, if it doesn't work to do a site visit next week, and you all would like to do a site visit as a group, we could hold a, you all could hold a recommendation on this until your July, or until July twenty. That would be after town council's heard the public hearing, but it would be before town council. I would do that. My question is, is anyone else besides me ready to go on this? We're seeing that, we're gonna put it off, they signed site visit, but... I assume, do we have enough people that would be going?
I'm not ready to go on, because I see town Christiansburg residents, and also see what the school board is proposing.
Okay.
Out of the end of this, say, here you need to...
I think the advantage of waiting also, as we've had one public hearing planning permission tonight, I think it's always wise to, when town council has their public hearing, and listen to the other public that may go in their meetings and get a good understanding of that. So I would encourage you, maybe not necessarily to come to town council meeting, but to at least attend a Zoom meeting. And when you can see the different comments and of public.
So are you making the recommendation that we not vote next Monday on this, that we hold a decision on July twenty?
That's, that's up to the commission.
That's a fair point.
But...
I think you're absolutely right with that, and I tell you why, because it's such a different times right now, that people are so confused about what they're doing. You know, people are sitting at home, can we say no comment, can we not say no comment, can we be on Zoom, probably gonna be on Zoom. I mean, these are very, very strange times for everybody. And I think a lot of the citizens in the town of Christiansburg would wanna have a vote. And I think, why do we have to push this when he knows that he's not even gonna have the time soon?
Yeah, I think it's very important, and I think, Will, you mentioned it's a very compressed schedule that we need more meeting again next week. I mean, I'm of the opinion that it's that important that we should take our time on this one. And whether it's, you know, a site visit, more public comments, town council meeting, or any other additional questions that may come up that we need answered. So that's, that's just, I mean, how do the rest of the commissioners feel?
I have a, I have a question. When's the next time the school board is meeting? Like, will they be meeting before, before July twenty-second?
We do have a meeting in July, but, I mean, I can get, I can make the recommendation, it'll get accepted for us to extend our request, but...
I would just, I feel bad that you're stuck in the middle as the liaison between governing bodies, and if there's a possibility for some type of work session, whether it's between us or the town council and the school board, to have a more direct discussion, because I think you're getting put in the middle of a situation where you're trying to come up with the best, most creative solution that benefits the school and the students and, you know, the town, but you're being constrained by the school board. And if we could have them answer directly to us instead of playing telephone, it may be a more productive conversation.
The challenge, I mean, you could, the challenge would be is just everybody's schedules. They'd want me to be in attendance, and the superintendent's out for two weeks. So, you know, he comes back the seventh, and then I'm gone that week. So the earliest we would be is the week of July fourteenth. Now, we could do a tour, and if you wanted, you could hold your meeting in our professional development room. We've done school board meetings there. But why don't you let us work with Will, if it's agreeable with the commission? I don't mean to speak on his behalf. But, you know, if you would agree, let us work with Will and Will work out a schedule that works for everybody.
I think that makes more sense. Agreed?
Okay.
Okay, so, further ado, I ask, if I am out of town next Monday. So I just want, if you are going to vote, I wanted my thoughts to be on record, because I would not be where to vote, which is, I understand completely where Montgomery County is going from as far as needing a place for buses. But in looking at the future land use map, the hopes of downtown Christiansburg, at this time, based on the information that I have, I am not comfortable moving forward with the agreement. I am for sure open to doing a site visit. But if there were to be a vote next week, I could not participate. So as a planning commissioner, I feel that it was my duty to share my thoughts on where I sit and what I thought was best for downtown Christiansburg. But if we can do a site visit later, I would love to go look and acquire more information.
So let's, let's go on the recommendation that Will, let us work out some dates and times. And let's postpone making any decisions tonight. And most likely, I'd like to meet in July. Say. Are we able, or you'd like to?
You can mention.
Like a motion to... Can I have a motion?
Motion to push the decision on this item three and four to the twentieth?
July twentieth.
July twentieth.
So say. All of those in favor?
All right.
All of those not? Next.
And so the hope is that on that day or sometime before, we can have a site visit?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
He'll, I'm gonna run.
If you don't mind, if we step out, will you?
Oh, you do, thank you for taking your time today.
Thanks for coming, everyone. We're gonna move on to the next public hearing, and you're all welcome to stay. Will is going downstairs to see who in the public is here to speak. I mean, so just, just a couple minutes.
Sorry, we're recording.
It's dead. However, there is a...
I think it's being recorded.
It's being recorded, so...
We gotta back that message.
Yes.
Since we are recording, thanks. Can I ask another question about something else that, you know?
Why don't we wait, let's get through the public hearing, and then we have other business? Let's talk about other projects.
Are we still on video?
Yes, yeah, this is someone. We may have lied to the Christiansburg interested people.
I do appreciate y'all being coming out tonight. I think that shows your dedication to the mission, especially during the public hearings. The public is coming out to speak. I think it shows them that
We are being there.
We take our positions very responsibly.
That's important, just to hear what the citizens, the town residents have to say about this. So maybe I'll take it.
Will, did we have anyone? Yes, John is walking over. Okay.
John.
Yes?
Let me ask you this. When you camp, are you on a path, or do you have a program access?
When you have a...
Oh, okay. So you're glamping.
Typical.
Okay, so I can tell you're glamping, not camping. I'm saying that's the only way to do that. Well, let me tell you, we tried twice now with my two-year-old back there, she is not on board right now, because she wants to play. She's not a piece of this. We kicked her three times when she was a year or so, she's great. Or four months, she's a normal grade, four months, not two. But we sleep in the woods and asleep in the back on floors.
Okay, we're gonna move on to point number five, public hearing for rezoning request by Golden Triangle Development, Alacoc C. For an proximally two-acre property located north of Plain Drive, southeast and south of Interstate eighty-one, adjacent to Reagan's Point subdivision, mat number five-three-zero-dash-two-dash-eight-seven-C. They request to rezone the property from Agriculture District to R3 Multifamily District. The property is designated as residential on the future use map of the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg comprehensive plan. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak? And of course, we do. Stand your name and your address, please.
John Neil, I'm an engineer with Gay Neil Incorporated here in Christiansburg. Twelve-sixty Radford Street is our business address. I think that's the address you probably want.
Good to see you again, Mr. Neil.
Yes, sir, you too. You'd like me to start?
Please.
Thank you all for your time this evening, I appreciate it. First Chairman, Ernie White, Commission. As I noted, I'm the engineer for Golden Triangle Development. Chris apologized, he cannot be here this evening. And this is a continuation, and kind of an update of an existing development that is under construction and has quite a few homes occupied and sold, as of right now today. And we had contemplated what I am proposing, as you can see in the two drawings. We contemplated that back when we did the original rezoning three years ago, about, something like that. And we'd shown that, however, we've had to because of the purchase of the property. I'll explain this, I'll try to make this as clear as I can, it is a little bit complicated.
Okay.
So the first drawing that you have here is one of the concepts that we did for the original reason. What you can see is, there's a triangular-shaped piece of property that is at the top of the page. That property was owned by VDOT when we first proposed the project. And that property was owned by VDOT because probably more than ten years ago, when VDOT did the interstate upgrades and adding lanes and all that stuff at the interchange, they acquired that property from a different property owner for a stormwater management pond to take care of the stormwater coming off the interstate. That pond was never constructed. I honestly cannot tell you why, we tried to find out. But it was not constructed during the construction of the interstate project. So when we, when Mr. Smith purchased this property and started developing, we're looking at ways to design the project and the new public streets and the new homes and things like that, we had to design stormwater management. And it, stormwater always runs to the lowest point. And that was down here to this pond area. So as we started investigating, we proposed to the town of Christiansburg and VDOT that because that pond had never been constructed, that Chris might be willing to go in and construct that pond that was actually managing, stormwater was supposed to manage stormwater off the interstate and then going down along the interstate. This is at exit one-eighteen B, and it was going towards exit one-eighteen C. We proposed to construct that pond and then handle both Irish stormwater as well as VDOT stormwater that was not currently being managed. Unfortunately, things progressed rather slowly, or were not progressing, was trying to coordinate between VDOT, the town of Christiansburg. So we had an alternative plan, which you see, which was the first one I showed you, where we built a pond upstream of the non-VDOT pond on this property. But we also had an alternative, if that something was to work out, that we would propose to build with VDOT. And I've already made it very confusing, so I apologize. We had to move on, Chris had to move on, the construction timelines and things like that, he needed to build homes and sell homes. So we moved on with this plan that you see here. About two years after all of our plans were approved, VDOT came to Chris and said, well, we won't let you go, but we'll sell you the property, because it's surplus to us, we don't, we don't need you anymore. So we worked with them over the last several months and worked with the town of Christiansburg engineering staff about how exactly the design of the pond would work and things like that. And Chris went ahead and purchased the property from VDOT. So what we're proposing is the second sheet, as you see here, and proposing to move the pond that was approved for our project down and actually construct the VDOT pond. And we've been working with the VDOT residency, their stormwater engineers, as well as the town's stormwater engineering staff, and went through, already went through the design requirements and elements to design this pond, so that it will manage all of that stormwater that was supposed to be managed coming off of the VDOT property, the interstate, as well as this project. But in doing that, because Chris has purchased this property, we need to amend our conditional use permit and the reasoning for this property that Chris has now purchased, and I think it comes in as agriculture, right?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
So, so we have to kind of incorporate this into our overall development. That is a very long-winded story for not a lot of information. But we end up adding eight lots to the subdivision where we moved our pond. And we also shifted the entire green space for the project down into this area. It's a relatively low-lying area and relatively flat, that will allow for additional green space. The original approved planned housing development had seven to eight percent open space. This project has about 15% open space. So we've tremendously increased the open space in the subdivision. And I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I'd encourage you to check out the homes down there. I think they're being very well received. And Chris is trying to construct them as quickly as he can because there are lots of folks that are looking for patio-style homes, one-level living. He sells to a lot of folks that are interested in that, that market.
Okay. I'm gonna move on and ask if there's anyone else that wants to speak on point number five. Why don't we hold our questions until we get through point number six? And then we'll have our discussion again and ask that question then. So hearing no one, and Will, no one else downstairs? Okay. Let's close point five and open up point six of the hearing for condition of use permit. Request contingent upon perceived item by Golden Triangle Development LLC in to amend the approved planned housing development for Reagan's Point subdivision located at the west end, western end of Giles Drive, southeast and Glade Strad, southeast. Request is to include tax map number 530-2-87C in the planned housing development and to modify the approved development plan and regulations in order to add nine additional single-family units within the development at approximately density of development of 4.4 units per acre to reconfigure the open space and stormwater management facility. Portion of effective property includes tax map number 530-2-87C, 530-18-A, -D, 530-18-34, and 530-18-46 in the R3 multifamily residential district. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map of 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Okay.
I apologize, I think I said eight, eight lots, but I guess.
Okay, so, Mr. Neil, of course, you're, you're a source of information tonight on this. And at this point, you shared some information with us at Wood Cover, point five and point six. What I'd like to do now is actually open it up to the commissioners with discussion points and ask if you'd be willing to answer some questions that they may have.
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to.
Okay, great. Commissioners? Absolutely.
What number of homes are you building right now? What, what number are you in? Like, I know there is like forty-something. What, what's the number of the homes that are gonna be built in the nine properties that you're gonna be building?
So are you asking where they're building currently?
Yeah, which ones are the ones that he's requesting right now?
Okay. Sure, so if you look at the two different drawings there, you'll see on what's the first one.
The same copy.
Yeah, so there's two different ones. They look very, they look really close, but they're a little bit different.
Oh, so you're moving the pond. I'm sorry, I just, I thought it was the same copy. But yeah, so this is the old version and this is the new version. I will say your maps are a great deal. And track moving.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
With that saying, so you're moving over here, this is the ones, the nine that VDOT requesting, right? And then there's, so this used to be green space, which is getting a little bit up to here, and so I think there might be.
Yes.
So you're not gonna have a playground anymore?
Well, so the original thing was that there might be a playground place there. We didn't specifically put it in the rezoning, that was just one of the options for that, that open space. There certainly could be something down in the open space, gazebo or a playground or a- We, we have really found, I think Chris has found that we don't have a whole lot of kids are purchasing these homes, or families with kids, I should say, not kids purchasing homes, but families with kids purchasing these homes. So I think we're not, he's gonna try to place something in that open space that would be suited to the demographic that's purchasing the homes. It was kind of pretty open for selection.
So just a couple comments. I did drive out there today, quite a few houses out there. Patio homes, as you mentioned. And I think we, in Christiansburg, there's a great demand for those. Jennifer don't wanna say anything, not true. So like the villas, very popular patio-type homes. I did have an opportunity as I was driving through to speak with two of the neighbors. And very complimented of what work was being done. And I asked them if they were going to attend the meeting, and they said, "There's no need, we're very pleased at what's going on." So that's just a little feedback from direct input I had today, just driving through there. No, no concerns, but that's only two people. But that's two more that did show up tonight. So I, I guess, the only thing I saw is, and again, I'm not an expert on it, but the privacy wall or the sound barrier between A1 and that neighborhood, it appears to cut off. Okay? And where these houses are, I couldn't determine whether they would be protected by the existing one or if there was plans for VDOT to extend that. And just as I'm overly concerned, people moving into a nice patio homes, nice neighborhood, and then we have A1.
I, I don't know if it shows up on there, I can't say, I don't think I have. But on our survey, the sound wall does show up. And it, I think it generally extends down to the point where the, the houses peel away from the interstate right away.
It's right there, on the side of the line. Is that called the track line?
So I think it ends about right in there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So the majority of the homes will be behind the sound wall?
Right.
Now, right there, I can't, honestly, I can't tell you exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, part of that, you probably have a desire to build or to have it built. Otherwise, people may not buy the property. I mean, that's, I mean, you have a selling point for real estate.
And sound, sound walls are actually quite regulated as far as when you can put them in and when you can't. And VDOT does that, not-
Right.
But they have very specific studies that they go through and do to determine exactly the extent of where a sound wall starts and ends and those types of things.
It's largely predicated on if a new road is, is constructed in a residential area as opposed to the other way around. So a residential development occurring at an existing road could not-
Then you, it's not like you can ask VDOT to build a wall or build safety.
It's a different conversation.
Yeah, you're right.
I have some questions about, I guess this will be for Will as well. I know I, I'm a Realtor too, I have some houses on that area, really nice homes that you guys have built in Christiansburg, so we're grateful that you're here. But as far as the, I guess the water pressure, as you are continuing to develop more houses over there, have you heard of any complaints about the water pressure or anything like that?
I have not heard any complaints about the water pressure. I know we were originally going with the original development, we worked with the town's public work staff on making sure that the pressure there was available and sufficient. We did, as part of the original set of plans, we have a water main extension allowance for at the top or the bottom of the page, on the bottom left of the page there. At some point, and you will be seeing me again here in several weeks or a month with a different client for the property that is just below this property that's been submitted. So Chris, as part of his plan and working with the town, allows for a water main extension to go over and get over to Fallen Branch Road. And one of the things, kind of from a pressure standpoint, to make sure that not only do you have redundancy in the water system, but also to increase the pressure if you get a fire flow in a certain area, is looping the water line, so it's connected in more than one point. And we do have that here with our water line going from Glade up to where Curtis intersects at the top of there.
As, as somebody that lives in Tower Road there, so a neighbor of that, it came to my attention, I don't know if it's still true or not, or if it's changed, but originally, there was one main line, water line that came that fed that whole area. So the more houses that are built, the more chance that you have of losing water. Is, is the, is there a possibility where you people would be willing to invest, help invest in some of that to change that as you keep developing? Because if it was up to me, I'd have that as part of the development before you could.
So, so Chris only owns this property here, and we allow for and have a stubout for the property below it to create that connection from Glade, Glade Road, Curtis over to Fallen Branch Road, which would then provide a second route for the water to get in back there. I'll be honest with you, I do not know if there is, I don't know what the water situation is all the way down in Tower and if there's only one line coming in or not.
I'm told there's only one line, so if you, if you knew that, that you would have secondary lines on it.
Correct, yes, sir. But it's two separate, just to be clear, yeah, two separate people.
Right.
Two separate buildings.
So as far as the water runoff, I know that the land is to have trees and tree ponds and, I guess not ponds, but stormwater ponds. But I remember from before, and I guess now it's only one. But even if you look at the satellite picture, it actually has the original three stormwater ponds before.
So I think that is the sediment traps that were part of our plans for the construction. And I'm not looking at the same thing, I don't know what, exactly what you're looking at, but. Yeah, that, that was just an entirely wooded site that probably got timbered at some point. And there could have been, as part of the timbering process, they may have put in sediment traps, but those were not ponds. That is our sediment basin pond for the construction. So your aerial photography that you're looking at there, if that's what you're looking at, is from part of our plans, our development plans.
Now, who is gonna own that corner, he's right there, that triangle? VDOT?
No, so that's, that's the parcel I was talking about, that VDOT-
Oh, I don't think that belongs again, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the part that-
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Go ahead.
So that's where, so you see the, the sediment basin area, the pond that you can see kind of water surface? That's our erosion and sediment control pond that we're, while we're constructing, while we have bare earth and ground and doing construction and road building and things like that. We're proposing that we will move that and create an actual stormwater management pond that will not be for erosion control, will be for quantity and quality treatment down on what was formerly the VDOT parcel, which is where VDOT was supposed to build a pond as part of the interstate project.
Now, how deep is that pond in, around this time of the year? How well do you have information?
Is it a dry pond, is it a wet pond?
It, so this sediment basin, it holds a certain amount of water. So it has a wet storage volume and a dry storage volume. So when we have a storm, a storm event, it fills up and then slowly lets the sediment settle out, trying to control that from going downstream. And then there is a wet portion that holds and lets long-term storage for the sediment to silt out and evaporate. When we get to create the actual stormwater management pond, that will be a dry pond, it won't hold anywhere at all.
So do you foresee having any issues on the rolling space of these ponds in the future, in the later future?
On the what?
On the homes that you're planning to build right there where you have the pond right now, which is gonna be moved to the very back.
Right.
Are you, are you asking if there's any concerns? Do you have any concerns of, I mean, you're saying that it's gonna be a dry pond, but that's gonna be right there where the water is right now.
No, we're substantially different elevation. So these houses would be above that by eight feet, 10 feet?
Above the pond. But when the, when the, when the sediment basin-
Is built.
If it were be, if, if you were to convert that sediment basin to lots, you agree with me, filter lifts and-
Yes, correct, I think that was-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I wanna make sure that some, these people are not gonna come back later and tell us, "Hey, I got mold issues" or "My house is sliding down the hill."
I mean, that, that's my question, that's my question. Having seen other developers, not saying that it's your company, still in a sediment pond, put in homes, and now those foundations are sliding down a similar hill, do you have experience with, with making this kind of pivot?
Yes, so, so two things. And, and just to be clear, I'm the engineer working for the builder, I'm not the builder. Just, just to be clear. Two things, one, the sediment basin has to be cleaned out, so the silt, that is just kind of like the sand, the unsubstantiated field that would be there, that all has to be cleaned out, and the sediment basin has to be closed out. And then as part of the building permit process, the building official will require, if you're placing a building on field, that you show geotechnical testing results to make sure that you have adequate bearing capacity for the house to sit on that. To answer your question.
That's an exact answer, but I'm just, I'm making sure we ask all the right questions.
No, absolutely, no problem whatsoever.
Another thing, I know that, I do know for a fact that a lot of people that are moving in this kind of ponds are normally older or retired, retirement age. But as far as the ponds, I know that you have built subdivisions in other places in the town, and you have had ponds like this. Do you foresee being able to put a fence around these stormwater ponds just for safety? Because who is to say there may be a grand child, there may be one of those couples that's sorry some of the child. You know, I, I know you cannot sometimes just blame for that, but we do have to go into that.
Yeah, so there, so there's different areas and different ponds that, that we've been involved in where sometimes they have chosen not to put in a fence, depending on the pond itself and kind of the nature of everything around it. We're actually working right now, well, I think, on Chris's developments. The homeowners association that has finally taken over the open space and the work there is working to take over the pond, and I think they have agreed they do not want the fence installed. So it's kind of really an ownership decision at that point, was taken over by the HOA on whether they want a fence there from a live building concern or not. We typically show, as part of the design, we typically show a fence around the 100-year elevation of pond from a safety perspective, but it's not something that is absolutely required.
So it is not authorized the pond? Because I know that you guys have built, like I said, the subdivisions in many, many places in the town. And that to me personally, when I go to visit some of these people at their homes, I have children, and I'm always very, very concerned. Because the one, for example, the one I called Hickers Ferry Road, I forgot the name of the subdivision.
Right beside the mall?
Yes, yes.
The Villas?
Con, the Condes?
No, their pond, some-
What? River Village?
No, 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 your ponds, um- My gosh, it's like on the nest, it's probably like several miles on the road from Hickers Ferry, and you may have left and... Anyway, there is a very deep pond there, and I know you guys build a subdivision. But that one right there does not have a fence on there.
Oh, so you're talking about, you go down into the, you're talking about Seneca Springs?
Yes, there you go, I'm sorry.
That's exactly what I was talking about, about the HOA, HOA has decided to not install that fence. And we, and we did do those plans, actually. But the other engineer that did those plans for Chris, they had the fence on there, which we typically do as part of the design. And he was going to install it, and working with the HOA, they decided that they would prefer it to not be installed.
But would take some liability off of, like, the idea of the HOA will take some liability in case there was something bad to happen there?
Correct, yes, the property.
And this will have a HOA.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, the surrounding area is R3, right? And this is R3. And the, the other homes, the other part, portion, the- And the, the other homes, the other part, portion, the significant portion of the Reagan's Point subdivision is R3.
Correct.
It has a proffer, the, the, the current piece in this, in the request, the current piece that's requested to go to R3, do not believe there has been, there's been one, but the existing stuff that's under development hasn't been built, is R3 with a proffer to a whole construction development.
So can you call that up? Uh, Will, it's, I believe it's called the zoning regulation for Smith slash Teal property. And I think it spells it out, which, um, my concern, of course, is, is going through an R3. Um, but with this in place, this would, uh, limit it to single-family home dwellings as well as, uh, I believe there's points A through I that, um, would be accompanying this development. And just want to make sure that that holds true. There you go. Thank you, sir. So, uh, one of the things that was mentioned, of course, is, is single-family, uh, very consistent with what's out there now. Um, that's good, um, and then the open space that we talked about, we did mention some playground, but it's noted in here, open space including park, playground, trails, and recre, and similar recreational uses. So that would be part of this as well?
Uh, that's allowed, so you kind of, that's the menu to kind of choose from depending on. Um, as we get into the actual design, I think we've got the pond really nailed down pretty close, uh, but as far as the backyard from those homes, and we also are required as part of Chris's purchase of VDOT, um, to allow them a, a small access road, access easement, uh, to service or, or maintain, uh, SAVW. And the culvert's coming underneath the interstate, so that would be up against the interstate? So we kind of have to stay clear of that as well.
So a couple of advantages of R3, uh, versus R1 is setback distances from the street and the lot sizes, and Will don't really say anything, again, uh, that's, that's not true. Um, and, and I think that's an advantage, and, and, um, you know, we had other divisions that we questioned about that, and, but it's consistent with what's out there today, so that, that does make sense. Um, I would ask, Will, we had a discussion on setback, definition of setback in Town of Christiansburg. We might want to make sure that we know exactly what that definition is, uh, especially going into R3, and where we had questions of, I believe, we were all in, in the meeting that, a porch, extension porch, an overhang, a back deck, how do those come into perspective to a setback distance? And these are very close together, I've been out there, and if you were to extend, you know, a, a porch or a drive or a back deck, I mean, it's taking up the majority of the lot.
Well, and that's one of the, the good things about Golden Triangle and, and Chris and his group, they not only develop the property, but they also build every single home in the development. Um, and so they have their plans nailed down, they know exactly, uh, the widths and things like that, and so we have planned this development for their houses. And we've been working with Town of Christiansburg on all the setbacks, uh, through Seneca Springs as well as the first, uh, street coming in there of, uh, there's probably 20 houses for a new, uh, construction. Uh, and we haven't had any problems thus far, but yes, sir, port of mind.
And you don't foresee any issues here, Will? No, I would just, just kind of to make it clear, so, and this, this came up, um, if I remember correctly, this, this came up with Seneca Springs, or excuse me, with the original request to Reagan's Point. Why was this an R3, which was subsequently a planned housing development for a single family? Um, the R3 does allow for greater density, now, it, really, the density of this development, um, was close to probably could have, could have having been accomplished at a R1. Um, but, but it, it was accompanied by a proffer to only build single-family dwellings. Now, now again, that's, that's not, that's not been put forth on the, on the property question. The presented zoning regulation, which are very, which are very similar to what was originally approved, there are a couple of tweaks to a couple of the lot width requirements, um, which would enable a couple of those lots on the southwest section to essentially be reconfigured to have a couple of dwellings where it was, it was resists originally. Um, but, but they are called zoning regulations, but these really are in the, for instance, the committed uses and all that stuff. This is really the document that guides the planned housing development, which is the condition. So, uh, you know, were this, were this to be approved, it would be an R3, and it would also have the approved planned housing development. But if the current property owner or any other property owner of this property sort of chose, it, it would be an R3 property. The, the, the regulations here are really only tied to the use of planned housing development.
But we did proffer only single-family homes?
It was proffered on the, on the original, but, but this current piece of property, I don't, I don't think.
Will happily proffer that, it's absolutely, so that's a concern.
But that's not like that would hold the base.
Yes.
Except that one. Well, it's good explanation. Uh, so, when you came to, to us right now, you're asking for the extra lots to move the pond, and then another thing is instead of, you're taking away the neighborhood park, and then you're building a house, is that correct?
Well, I guess I would not necessarily say we're taking away the neighborhood, we're relocating, we're moving from.
So how much more land do you own down here? Do you own any more land?
Yes, so, we're moving from, as an overall development, the original proposal was a little over 13 acres.
Yeah.
And we had about seven to eight percent open space, something like that, green space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have added two and a half acres of that property roughly, two acres, something like that, the triangle piece from VDOT, right, two acres, and, um, we're now at about 15% open space. Um, so we have added, you know, um, eight percent of land and doubled the open space.
That includes the, uh, stormwater?
Yes, yeah, and it did on the original development as well.
So there is not, this one, because it's R3, is not required to do the 24% green spaces, correct?
It, well, it would be, it would be required to do what the planned housing development regulations for this prop, for this development is, so it, it, it really is governed by on the individual lots, you have the overall setbacks, um, and, and then as the planned housing development, it has, we would have approved essentially, this would, you know, this were approved, this would essentially be the approved concept plan, site plan, very likely, very closely. Um, and in your agenda packet, the proposed change, the, the proposed concept plan was included along with what is the current site plan on file of the approved site plan, so you can, you can sort of compare this, this is, currently as a sediment basin, which would, would eventually be transitioned to a stormwater facility, uh, you know, and, and then, uh, so you essentially have some lots being filled in here, and you have six additional lots filled in, filled in here, and really only have, truly just about three lots that are actually gonna have, um, as part of that, that it would have, that would come, that would bring this, this parcel into play. Um, then you have this lot adding an additional one, this, this, which was the, essentially the parking lot of the little park would be a lot, um, and then where this was open, you would have these two lots, I would be, it would be two homes, uh, really, but almost all the green space, open space would be up here, safe for the little buckler.
And, and the lots that are being proposed are the same size as the lots currently out there?
Yes, sir.
And then the other question I have is, I couldn't tell from the streets, is there parking on one side of the street, or no parking at all?
The, the, no, the streets are, they're just, they're just standard 50-foot right-of-way streets, 30-foot pavement, I believe this is roll-top curb. Um, and so, um, I actually think that traffic colliding is, uh, the, sort of the whole Glade area, but has, wanted to talk about traffic colliding. Um, but as far as I know, this is just, these are just public streets, do not have any prohibition against on-street parking.
Because they, they appear to be very skinny or tight as I was driving through there.
I think it changed that now.
I know.
Okay, it doesn't move, it is not very.
Yeah, I mean, some of that, some of that, I think, just becomes, you know, it's, they are, you know, smaller lots than the typical.
But that's what R3 would allow.
So you do have additional, you know, you do have additional parking lanes on the street, because you just have more homes on a linear segment than you would.
And we, as part of our development plan that we did originally, um, as well as this, which we're not actually adding any street, uh, as part of this, this change, you can see in the upper left-hand corner, that's the Town of Christiansburg's public street section. You know, as far as showing you the width of the street and the curb and gutter inside of it.
So it's begging, is it the Town of Christiansburg?
I'm sorry.
Who is gonna pay the rest of the roads when we continue to develop them?
Uh, so, Chris, we, that Town of Christiansburg's typical street section requires us to do stone and pavement and the curb gutter, and then Chris pays and installs, goes over, pays and installs the town streets, uh, that are part of the development. And then the town, after inspection process, they take them over for operation purposes.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners?
When the original, um, hearing was held, folks from Glade Road were concerned about the traffic. Um, is there any, any plans to extend Glade Road down to Fallen Branch in the future?
So, um, I will take off my golden triangle for a second. And we are working with the adjacent property owner that is, has submitted a resenting application for that. One of the town's comments on their kind of preliminary review, uh, of the stuff that was submitted was to plan for a connection, uh, and then put my golden triangle back on. Golden Triangle dedicated right-of-way all the way up to the property line that would allow for that street to be extended. Um, so Golden Triangle did what they can do as far as, uh, providing the right-of-way up to the property line. Then the next property down, as part of their process, I envision, uh, that that will be part of that is to extend that right all the way down to Fallen Branch.
So commissioners, what do we think? Do we have enough information?
Uh, if you want to wait, because he sounded like he might be willing to offer something that we cannot ask for at a later meeting.
Uh, so, so true. May I ask?
Sure.
If you'll call back up and look at, the, the only thing that, all of our proposed lots are still bound, other than a little tiny sliver of property still bound by the proffer that said only single-family homes. So I said I'd be happy to clear that up with a proffer, uh, I, I really, respectfully, I really don't think it's necessary. Um, and you can see that VDOT property only touches two, maybe, portion of the third lot.
You know, you're not inviting two, so those, those three are still on the original? Would there be no concern that on that grassy area, they could play since they're relocating it? I can imagine what the slogan would, no? But I mean, but technically, if there wasn't a proffer, right, right, like technically, that whole triangle is R3. It could, and there is no proffer, it could, it's in a line of development, or something like that.
So technically?
That's technical.
Yes, so there would be no, uh, ability to manually access that property, which the town would require, to, 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 something else?
I'm getting the sense that there is some concern about it, but?
Yes, we have one more question, so.
Good.
I know, everybody knows we have done a lot of work over the last months. As far as the stormwater pond, how much higher are those houses going to be from stormwater pond? And was the rate of the water actually just dissipating into the ground after every rainfall? Have you been able to do any kind of those studies, or who is doing that?
Yeah, so, so to get a little bit more in the weeds for you, if you're ready to go there, um, as part of VDOT's interstate project, they had proposed a pond there on the VDOT property. Um, in, uh, in preparation for that, the Town of Christiansburg, back 10-plus years ago, uh, performed a project, designed and constructed a project along the backs of those houses, in between the backs of those properties and, um, interstate, a storm drain, uh, improvement project, um, to carry that water back to there. I know that historically, probably more than 10 years ago, those houses back there, I think, did have some issues with stormwater whenever a few thunderous rains and things like that. Um, to the best of my knowledge, uh, with the town installing that storm drain system in there, I think that's been greatly reduced. Now, I don't live there, I can't speak for any of those homeowners or anything like that, uh, but I do know that the town, uh, 10-plus years ago, installed the storm drain system that was set up to, to take the water from the VDOT pond, uh, when it was constructed. So we're actually going to be, uh, improving the stormwater management, because you have all that water coming off the interstate right now, uh, that is unmanaged. We're gonna construct the, the pond, and we have worked with, uh, the VDOT stormwater engineers, as well as the Town of Christiansburg's engineers, uh, and submitted to them, uh, back and forth, all of our designs, uh, for that stormwater management facility, they've looked at it, they, they're satisfied with it. And I think VDOT has actually signed off, uh, the VDOT stormwater engineers, they had, they, they looked at this.
Will any of those homes need flood insurance by any chance? Will any of those ponds will have to purchase a flood insurance policy?
Will have to purchase a flood?
Yeah, well, they have to, the ones that are running, the ponds.
It's not a flood zone.
So?
So flood insurance only gonna happen if part of this property was actually in a, in a flood zone itself, but the retention pond doesn't cause that.
I know, but he said that there used to be water issues on the pond, but that doesn't mean it was in a flood zone.
If FEMA has, would have to definitely get as an actual flood zone. For that, uh, that's not something that he would have to worry about, and the homeowners wouldn't either.
Close one thousand, I think we should, eight foot above.
Yes, our, our houses will be in the neighborhood of eight foot above the, the stormwater management pond where the, the, the 10-year storm high level would be.
Right.
Is that 10 years?
Twenty-five.
Any other questions? Okay, um, commissioners, what would you like to do tonight?
I'm gonna have to go, I'm right here. Do you really wanna do that? I'm on first. You have, have anybody having questions?
Any major concerns?
Please make a motion to approve, I see, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? And?
It's good again, right?
We need to do that again, because one was for the resulting.
Oh, I should have said, yeah.
So be more specific. And then for the?
C, C.
C, C, C.
And, and, and would you actually agree with the, in compliance with the presented plan and development regulations?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to accept item six for commisioning each part of permit in accordance with the plans.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, that's us.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for coming out.
Okay, um, commissioners, it's getting late, we have one more item and that is, um, other business. So Will, you wanna start this off on the business?
No, other than just, welcome back. Let's see everybody, um, you know, before before the, before the nineteen, for the, had us take a pause, the, the, there was the, um, there was a change item that we had talked about, um, it would also had talked about maybe wanting to try to do some type of a, you know, probably not for meetings like tonight where we're gonna have multiple public hearings, but on more sort of regular type meetings, do some type of a tutorial or an event or a topic as part of the planning mission. Um, I'll take head nods from you all, but that, but that would still kind of be, but I think that would be a great thing to do. Um, I think we had Wayne, we had Wayne come in.
Maybe Wayne?
Yes. At our last, the second panel meeting, um, we were gonna do a presentation on for current and ongoing micro walkover projects, sidewalk control projects, so, um, I, again, if I give head nods from you all, I will kind of look to put those on other business and if you all get items you either like to do yourself or something you'd like us to look into, just feel free, you know, we'll kind of keep a list of, of things to, to do.
The other one was the regional housing study that was very premature. I'll probably know a little bit more on that on Thursday, you know, at the regional question, so see how far I can come on that. That would be nice for, for that to last.
And I, I would like to, um, kind of gear back up, particularly on that, um, Bill, it's a community topic, if I do it tonight, and probably not next week, just because of the impact, this might be a long meeting, but I, I'd rather go ahead and kind of give that over.
Great. Great.
I did have two topics, and actually, one of them is potentially related to that, like, I don't know a whole lot about the study. Um, but since we do have a lot of people coming in with housing development and someone who's not a realtor in the area, or someone who owns a house, so I'm not currently searching. Um, I would love to know what are the needs of Christiansburg as far as housing? Cause we often hear of portable housing, and so I don't know that I have a really good idea of
Yeah.
the variety of options.
This plan is really.
And that, okay, cause I'm, cause I think like as a planning commissioner, I really need to be educated on
Yeah.
what's out there and what's missing, especially as we are making decisions about moving forward with housing, like, like if everything is two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, thousand, but what we really need is like fifty to a hundred, then we're not doing a service for our citizens. So that's what that is.
And also took in, into consideration mixed views, and I think I made that comment at our last meeting that uh, the decisions that, that this commission has been making is just spot on exactly to their development plan that, at least the preliminary version I saw. And, and I think something like that, when that's shared to us, then that helps us make our decisions. Um, and, and know that we're moving in the right direction of the needs of not only Christiansburg, but the whole valley.
Well, each particular site, Reagan's point.
Yes.
Has, I think it's three different options that you've invited me before, but I think it's only three. So they have a set pricing, you pick one of, of, uh, three different designs, and that's what it's gonna cost you. You have add-ons that will give you a little bit greater price, and you also have deductions. I had a good friend that looked at that, he was very impressed with that. He did not want to be adopted in an actual way that smirks against by. So they have, they have a very good plan.
And I think I just wanna see like all of the Christiansburg, you know, like make sure that we have like mixed available opportunities, um, between rentals and. The, um, the other topic that I love is for someone to come from dialogue on race. I know that because of COVID, that conversation didn't happen in the spring. And I think, again, thinking about making sure that we are aware of our citizens' needs and that we're taking all of that into consideration as we're making policy changes or housing or whatever it might be. Um, I think it'd be really good to hear as far from someone on dialogue on race, what are our current status is? Um, what are areas for growth and what can we be as commissioners, make sure that we are informed in our decision making, kind of going forward to be in alignment with? Uh, and then you have initiatives there moving forward, uh, to be more inclusive in our town. So those are my two topics.
Will, I think we had one, um, I threw out a possible discussion on timing of our meetings. And given that it's now nine forty-two, is there interest in starting the meetings earlier? Not necessarily extending as late as we are tonight, but an opportunity to maybe start at six or six thirty rather than seven o'clock. And I think town council is looking at something like that too, am I, right? I don't know anything about that.
Well, they tried to, but it didn't pass with everybody.
Okay.
So I think the question was, why is to do that, but you also have to account that there's a lot of people that are working with different, you know, uh, schedules, so.
And, and given the current situation that everyone's in, um, not everyone, but working from home and different time, you know, tables. Um, I just thought it was a, a possibility that we can throw it back on the table and maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, I, I don't know. Um, what, what do you guys think?
I think I would like to six thirty.
I know, but either way, it's.
I mean, I, I would love to get out earlier. I, I'll be honest, as a, as a parent, uh, as someone who works in Blackford and will be physically on campus at some point soon, it is hard often to get, and I have a spouse, so he can, he definitely does a lot, but like, it's just hard to get in, get it all done and get here, um, at seven. I, I can maybe think of six thirty to work, but I don't know of other folks, I think, I know people here who do not work in this area, I don't know what their commute looks like because.
I work in Montezo County, uh, sometimes I'll even work at four, four, sometimes I'll even work at five thirty. It takes me close to an hour to and from work, um, just, I like to, I, I can possibly do six thirty, but anything earlier than that is gonna be pushing. Because I, I have kids, my, my wife works, she works at tech, but I have to go home to tend to my children first, right, so they're not killing each other and then. So then, I mean, at six thirty, that's, that's as early as I could possibly do. Seven o'clock was definitely giving time.
I mean, if it puts a damper on everyone, you know, a strain, then we'll keep it set, but if it's a possibility to move it up a half an hour, we can try it.
Try it.
What would that do to a development subcommittee meeting? Not a development, as far, I mean, those tend to take place at six.
It would shorten it.
I mean, like, I hate those because I do a lot of like negotiations to make them, but I'm just saying, would that maybe would move those to five thirty?
I think it wouldn't have to be, because those meetings, we need that full day.
Yeah, I was.
To get through what we need on that, you know? So that is considered, so I'm out, I'm out of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, five thirty is really five.
Okay.
I'm tired of that idea.
I want some of the room room meeting, but I'm five thirty yesterday, that's really.
So you guys think, when I think about even voting on six thirty or?
No, cause that would develop, that would, that would make a difference on the subdevelopment committee. We need an hour for that meeting.
And, and that is.
That's started off.
That is if we have it the same night.
And I, I can't do not.
I'm sure retired.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, cause like, I have.
You want some kids?
I got four.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, let's, let's leave.
I have like our time making meetings that are not on, like, I, I put the entire planning commission twenty twenty dates on my calendar and then I, all the other money is on.
All right, let's leave it.
And I'll just, the last thing I'll note is, you know, we, this is our first meeting in three months, we were open, we were open to the public. We, we did also, as we saw, we, we offered and gave the opportunity for those wishing to provide public comment, they could, um, there was an online form, they could submit, um, they could call them into the meeting. Um, I thank Melissa, um, she and Amy from, uh, Public Relations helped make this thing, I hope it worked okay.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and, uh, we'll be getting this again, definitely for our next one maybe. Um, but, you know, I think there are some good things that I, I suspect for going forward, we will continue to provide additional means of access to our meetings. Great.
I, I will say that as far as COVID has presented a lot of challenges, but there has been something about access, so for people who like want to participate but can't physically get here for a meeting, non-COVID related, I do think that, my hope is that we'll see more involvement and engagement. Like town council, I now have a little one, and I don't wanna leave my house at seven, so, but I can participate and be informed because those are online, so like, so I do think more people can be, okay, so I can go over to them.
I gotta, you guys sound without a topic, I have one question.
Yes.
And this is not going to do with what we're talking about tonight, and it's okay for you to stop me. Um, I, and I know this may be, you don't have to answer it if you don't want to. You still were talking about you had issues with that developer. Um, would you tell me if that was family?
No, it was not.
Okay. Tomorrow, um, I was now part of planning commission, um, when you guys made a decision to allow family to, you know, to come to town council for the developments that are gonna happen around the mall. Um, there are a hundred and something properties in one place, there are like apartments.
They're, they're rentals.
Yeah, they're gonna be rentals. Um, will you guys tell me a little bit of what you guys, um, where your thoughts were about time, uh, that you can share with me?
Is this the town center or?
Uh, no, this would be magnolial point.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was, uh, it was, it was.
I can't, I can't remember.
It was.
A hundred and forty-nine.
Right, it was, it was twelve or fourteen, the, the request, twelve, twelve to fourteen townhouses and then a hundred and forty-something.
Yeah, or one of you rent.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Will you guys, will you guys?
Can, can I suggest, going back to looking at the minutes?
I was listening to it, but, yeah.
And let's start there, and given the time that we have tonight, maybe look at the minutes, um, get your questions together and let's put it on the agenda for now.
Tomorrow. So I just, I just wanna kind of, like, some recommendations that you guys, maybe there was something that you guys didn't think about the minutes back then, that maybe you're thinking about it now, since you've had so much time to think about it. Or maybe there was a question you didn't ask at the time or?
I think a bit we got was the tr- the trash, the trash.
Yeah, the traffic, I had heard that from a lot of people.
The traffic and the trash, there was a trash issue, and he, and he picked up within like twenty-four hours or two.
Yeah.
But the traffic, they figured out because they were willing to hire, remember correctly, they're realigning the entrance with the road across the street, so that was.
That would be a separate entrance.
Yeah.
And those were the two big things that I can recall off the top of my head that.
And he was required to purchase a piece online to be able to have a connection road, right?
Yeah.
To.
That would be a main entrance.
Main entrance.
So it would be on, what is that, New Village?
New Village.
So New Village Road would not get all that traffic from this new development, it'd be a, the main road would be to the right.
Were there any recommendations from you guys as far as having a, um, light traffic light over there somewhere?
Did you talk about that, about like the spacing?
They did, they did the traffic study, he showed, he showed information on it, um.
I think we were, we were comfortable with the traffic and we weren't as comfortable with putting in another light.
But there was something about.
On one fourteen.
Yeah, because of the traffic coming back in the afternoon, late, late, or early in the evening time.
But we did have some good response from the public, and I don't remember any major negative public comments.
I just remember the trash thing, that, that.
Everybody was, that was the biggest thing.
That was the biggest thing.
Yeah. And that was left over from a previous.
Previous.
Yeah.
And I did go out there and, and it was gone, like, the next day.
Well, we want something to create.
All right, I know that there was another study done in the spring, um, you guys probably didn't see that, because I haven't seen it ever since I, I became part of this, um, for the traffic study. Will, do you have any of those results?
No, I mean, they were included in the, uh, in the agenda packet for tomorrow.
For tomorrow, cause I didn't see that that was the one that family had told me this week that they had done sometime in February. That is all the questions. Thank you so much. So sorry about the, just getting out of, but I really wanna hear you guys' perspective.
That's, that's good. Okay. Um, appreciate seeing everyone tonight and their help. Most thanks again, and, uh, and meeting adjourned.
And I'll be gone next Sunday, I hope to be in my head.
Thanks, Marissa.